Yeah, called order our special city council meeting workshop November 15th. We're actually gonna swap items on the agenda because we've got some technical problems with getting one of the engineers here to have a dialogue about the low water dam. So, we're gonna swap and go to number three, which is the discussion of the Excelsior building. Ms. Nephews, I guess you're the, are you still the principal spokesperson?
Well, I guess so.
All right, good.
Let me say.
Haven't we seen you here before?
Well, you probably have. I think I know some of you guys.
Yeah, okay, all right, good. Nice shirt.
Many, once again, thanks for inviting us to hear about our project. We realize it's a work in progress. The last time you each has to ask us very many questions, and I was talking to one of the council members, she says, "I want to hear more." I said, "We'd be available." But we wanted to, the dialogue to continue until such time we get a working document that we can all deal with. And so, I have a group here tonight. If there's any, I think right now, the viewing audience know the importance of the library, and our news person has made sure that they know so, but about how important this project is. And so, we just want you all to feel the same way. If you just ask us any question that you think we can answer, and we don't have the answer tonight, we get it. Part of the family is here. You've already met him before, so, your honor.
Okay. Floor's open for questions.
Oh, there's Jeff.
Chair Dev. You got a chair? Oh, you got a chair, right. Floor's open for questions.
Yes. I guess I'm just trying to figure out how we got named as a partner in this when we were asking, I guess maybe what I should ask is, "What do you think we asked you to do?" Because I don't think we ever asked to be involved in, as a city, spending city money on this, but now that's what it's morphed into. So, I wanna understand what you think we asked you to do, because this seems to have gone a different direction than we expected. Set a fair question, the mayor's a...
Well, I think so. I think in our previous dialogue, we, from our perspective, the city was either going to sell the property or demolish the property, and that's when you and a number of individuals came to us and talked about the possibility of maybe taking over the building. And then, the request was to get your 501(c)(3), get the historical perspective, which, historical identifier, which you have done. I think at one of the meetings, you had somebody here that said that they would put a roof on the building if it belonged to your foundation. And I believe that's where the dialogue kind of was. And now, the last presentation, I think, was a million-plus dollar estimate.
So then, not jumping right here, so then, what happened was, prior to that, Ed and I had met with them to make sure that we, because the goal was to save the building. That was always the goal. We met with Reverend Hammond and yourself and some of your staff multiple times. And that's what it was all about, to save the city, because the city was gonna demolish the building. That's what was gonna happen. It wouldn't even be a discussion right now. It would be, somebody would be mowing it with a plaque on it. And then, so then, we had another meeting. That time, Ed wasn't able to make it to the meeting. I was the only one that made it to that meeting with you and Reverend Hammond and a couple others. And you had subsequently met with Bruce Johnson, who said, or I gathered, was leading you to believe that he was gonna put some, put a bunch of different nonprofits in it. So, in the meeting that we had, when I was in there, was that what you want? Or do you want to have the building for yourself? I think that's when the conversation of it, turning into a museum, library, museum-type thing, that all started morphing at that point, on that conversation right there. Reverend Hammond asked me what I thought about putting city money into it, and I said I was absolutely against it, and was from the start, simply because I took an initiative as a council member, as your council member, and pulled Ed into the deal to make sure we saved the building, because you guys were out raising money for it, and we didn't wanna see the city come bulldoze it. And that was their contention, they were gonna bulldoze it. And so, at that point, that's where we're at today. I missed the last meeting. I had one meeting with you guys in here with Bruce, a relatively short one. But again, Bruce had, you know, I don't know if he'd made any kind of commitments or was trying to make commitments to you guys, but he has no authority to do any of that.
And that's where I can come in, step in now, because there was meetings that I was with you all, and when, with Bruce Johnson, when he was here, and the whole scope changed without even, without the council or myself, or I know for sure Brian was aware of that, because it was always on the same page, is that when you got your 501(c)(3), you got the organization put together, then we would look at ways through how to convey that building to you and to your organization, because there's no way the city can give that without giving it to another organization of 501(c)(3) or selling it, or however it would convey the property. But Bruce just...
And there's a fine line there, too, because how can you give it to one and not the other? There is a fine line there, and that's the logistics we had to work through, because how can I give it to you, but I can't give it to John?
Yeah.
Or if I can't give it to the mayor, but I can give it to you. So, there's, legally, we had to work through that.
And we were talking about going through a vote of the people. We were talking about setting it to a vote, which I'm sure the city would all be 100% behind.
Allow the city to give it to you for a dollar, or whatever it is.
For a dollar, however, whatever the legal ramifications, whatever city council would tell us how we would be able to convey that property, but...
And again, that had no council blessing, that was just conversation.
That was conversation, but we all talked about it. The council did all talk about that in workshop. But then, it came down that Bruce Johnson had changed the whole scope of the whole project altogether, and now he wanted to do something different with it without even bringing it to us, and that's when we were all at those last meetings.
He thought, he thought he was gonna just go and put a new roof on it and start renovating it and put a bunch of nonprofits in there. You guys weren't even part of the conversation when we were talking to Bruce initially about it, okay? It came up, you became part of that conversation, because I came and visited with you and Reverend Hammond, and then subsequently, we had a meeting in here with Bruce one after, or one morning it was, actually. But, it's like I told Bruce, I said, "You can't just go changing things. We agreed to give the building to them if they did these certain things, okay? And now, you come in and you're gonna put four, or five, or six, or eight, or 10 different nonprofits in there? That's not what we agreed to as a council." Okay? And that was part of the problem with Bruce, okay? You can't make those decisions, this is a council decision. We made a decision to give the building to you guys as a 501(c)(3) when you jumped through these multiple hurdles, which you were going through and have been going through.
Have accomplished at least two.
Okay. Never, just like I told Bruce, just like others have told Bruce, never, we can't take this taxpayers' money and put into that and give it to a different group, then what about them? When do they get taxpayer money put into something that they're doing, initiative that just the common Joes did one? So, you know, that's just my opinion.
Can I weigh in on it?
Yes.
Now, you're talking about putting taxpayers' money in there. The city's been putting money in there. The city's owned the building since, what, '67? So, we can't say it's not putting money in.
No, I understand, I understand.
Money has been put in there. That was the agreement that the city made back then.
Right.
What happened before this conversation started covertly, the building was given under the umbrella of the Parks Board. They met in City Hall to determine where this building would go. We were not even notified.
I remember that.
We were not even consulted.
Right.
We were not even advised. Just happened that one of the citizens overheard that this meeting was gonna take place. And so, we showed up and advised the Park Board as to the historical significance of this building. We were not even consulted. Had we been consulted, maybe this conversation wouldn't even be going on today. But monies have already been put into it, because this building owns, is owned by the city. So, we can't say you can't put taxpayer dollars in it.
Well, let me back up, let me back up.
We were putting it in, it's a city-owned building.
It was a city-owned building, correct.
I think the difference in what Brian is talking about is if...
Well, Evelyn told me, let me tell you the difference. Evelyn told me that the Park Board had that meeting and wanted me to champion and carry the torch, and I did carry the torch to make sure that building did not get demolished. So did Ed.
Right.
That's why we met with you guys, to make sure it wasn't gonna get demolished.
So, when it comes down to it...
But that's why I say taking taxpayers' money, with all due respect. I'm talking about, because we mentally already gave it away.
Well, but there was no complete consensus of the council to vote on that, from my knowledge, okay?
Okay.
So, here we are. You all, the council then wanted to dump a dilapidated building into our laps, that we would have responsibility of bringing it all up to code, we would have responsibility of doing whatever's necessary, when, you know, question of, were there some other monies allocated for the building through insurance and so forth? Now, the roof has been the major problem, and we do know that there was a claim filed on it. Now, I understand that it's city's prerogative to utilize the funds the way they want to, but there's an ethical issue of it, because the city did have the responsibility of maintaining that building. So, now, we're, you know, backed up against eight bars, so to speak, and say, "Here, you gonna do something with this building, or we're gonna bulldoze it over or what have you," which I think it was a disrespect to the African-American community for us to be treated that way. That's just me personally. And so, when we started this dialogue, whatever it took to maintain and preserve that building, yes, let's do it at all costs. Now that we've been able to look at the significance of that building, we have put a proposal on the table, because the building already belongs to the city, the city does have a stake in the building, something that we could collaborate together, work together in bringing about a good positive program for the African-American community. Now, you know, let's face it, the city is joint with a lot of entities throughout that we work together. So, this is nothing new. It is not nothing new. It just kinda looks like, when it comes down to investing or doing some things in the African-American community, we wanna shy away from and say, "Well, we can't put city tax dollars in there." But we pay city taxes.
I do think that there is a little bit of a difference of perspective here. I don't think that the city had any intent of dumping this on your foundation. I think what was being proposed was that your foundation said, "We will take over the building."
We have to, they did that time.
And the city said, "If you get your 501(c)(3), if you get the historical significance, which you have done, then, you know, we will work out an arrangement to actually give that building for minimal cost to your foundation." So, that's where we were, including the gentleman that was sitting right in that chair, who said, "I will put the roof on. I will put the roof on for nothing." He sat right in that chair.
We also, neighbors, solutions break with us and things like that.
I understand.
I wanna get to your point, just to my...
So, that's, just a minute, Evelyn. So, that's where we were, and then, then the proposal has come for us now to partner at a million and four, 1.4 million, or whatever it is that's in your proposal here, to a partnership, and the whole thing shifted.
Let me tell you, because we were on schedule with all of our meetings up until September, and you had called for another meeting, we, and you all didn't show up.
I thought that was with Serena. Wasn't that back during Serena's day?
It was the meeting, you know, as to your 501(c)(3), and all those things, and you all recall in the workshop meetings. And I don't know who was sitting, and I don't know...
We weren't council yet, that was Serena, when Serena was here.
Whoever it was.
That was back in '14. I'm just getting the year straight.
But I'm telling you, the meeting stopped.
Okay.
'14, they stopped.
I remember you saying that.
But we didn't stop. We pursued, and we got our 501(c)(3).
Yes, you did.
And what I'm thinking about it now, it was a good thing that it did stop, because by that time, the building probably would've been dumped over into us. But we came back now with a different perspective, a proposal, to find out what is it now, what is it we can do now, because the building still belongs to the city, and we just wanted to partner with the city. And so, you make it sound like so dear, so dire. It's not that dire, because you all stopped the meetings, we didn't stop them.
I don't recall that we stopped the meetings.
We never stopped the meetings, that was Serena's.
You did stop the meetings, because you didn't call, you didn't call one for another. You said September, and we came to the meeting in September, nobody showed up.
That was before this new council, let's be real clear on that.
Yeah, that was before.
Since this new council, we have not ever allowed a meeting.
We've never allowed a meeting.
Even if you don't remember, I do remember, because didn't I, didn't I, didn't I see you, Kim? And we were down there in the, in the, in the council chamber.
I'm trying to remember. I'm trying to remember.
Are you talking about this last September, or are you trying to say...
We showed up. Y'all did not show up.
Are you talking about last, a couple months ago? Are you talking about a year ago?
I'm gonna get you.
2014.
I'm gonna get you.
Yeah, and that's when we, that's when Ed and I championed that cause, to keep it from being demolished. Well, actually, they were trying to sell it. They were trying to do it, they had an appraisal in.
You're missing my point. The city did not call me, anymore meetings with us.
The last, the last time this group was together was August 4th of 2015.
So, we have been.
So, we scheduled for a meeting in September, and you didn't show up. We came, y'all didn't show up. We was gonna give you the update on our 501(c)(3) and all those things, you didn't show up.
It wasn't a workshop?
It was a workshop.
It was a workshop. It was a workshop. It was nothing to do with the real agenda yet, and my guys didn't have the real agenda.
No, that was '16.
So, was it a workshop?
It was a workshop.
Well, you know, and I'm not, I don't recall this, but...
Last meeting, last meeting. Only meeting I remember.
I'm trying to understand what the, what the relativity of that, why, what's, why are you bringing that up?
Because y'all trying to say that we changed the thing. We had, we certainly had time to change and rethink. It's probably a good thing that we did, because now we had chance to go over and look at other things that are happening in communities and how they did theirs, and looking at our facility, to think, this is now, we can make this a valuable facility that'll be worth the city's partnership and us, too.
Okay.
So, it's probably a good thing that we did.
Dr. Royal. My name's Gary Royal, I'm a bass in the group on this project. First of all, it, I hate to see us break this all up into, who remembers what, because we just got to come to a point where we agree to certain things, and then we can move forward. First of all, the building cannot be demolished, because it is on the National Historic, National Register of Historic Places. And so, if the city can't demolish it, nobody can demolish it, what do we do with it next? The city owns it. You have a nonprofit organization that would like to spearhead the restoration of it. So, that figure of 1.7 million dollars, I hate that that was thrown out there, because I've said it, it scares everybody out. We have no idea of what it's gonna cost, but what we do want to do is to receive the authorization from the city, from the council, to pursue some funding, to develop a plan to present to you as the owners of the building.
Well, that's what we asked you to do, so we can give you the building.
Well, that's what we are doing. We're just at this point. I'm sorry it's taken us so long, but we don't have all of the resources. I'll tell you what, I read this in the newspaper, the Oklahoma, and it said that the city officials, I know the city officials, some of them are not here now, but the officials went on record and in the public, and, and the city officials said, "Also playing a role in saving the old library site was the passage February 9 of the 3.0 cent Guthrie sale tax. Officials are hoping to raise $19 million in the next 15 years for a list of capital improvement projects. Restoration of the library building is one of the projects, but details hadn't been finalized, according to Guthrie city manager. John Dewey could be, was still the city manager at that time. The exact use for the facility is being discussed with several organizations, but no contract has been signed to date." That's really where we are, and all of the other discussions, it really just...
Yeah, we're not there. We were never there, but our city manager's misspoke, because he can't speak for us.
But all I'm saying is that...
But realize that, that's why you don't see, that's why you don't...
Please.
But you don't see him sitting here now for that reason.
We're dealing with the city. Whether it was in 1908, 19, 18, 1912, when the city decided to do certain things, we're way past that now, but the city made some official policies and they did things. Now, when one speaks in the public, and I know we all have questions about the press, but at least it puts in the minds of the citizens in the public that there was some commitment, some kind of way, to participate in the restoration of the building. So, nothing, no details had been developed, but there was a commitment to assist with the restoration of the building. Now, period. Now, where we go from there is another thing, and that's what I'm hoping that we can come to some agreement on step one, two, or three.
Well, and I, and I think we can.
Thank you very much.
I think we can. But I, I do think that that quote was probably, and who knows, because Bruce isn't here, but it was probably in, in support of what Brian was saying, Bruce said was gonna renovate it and turn it over to a number of nonprofits.
Yeah, I want to understand, and we didn't put, and we didn't ask him to put that in either. Who upgraded that stuff?
But the one good thing, let's look at, let's look at the good thing that came from all this. No matter what happens at the end of the day, it can't, it's a historic building, and it can't be demolished.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, now, we may, we may be forced to have to sell it.
It was a good thing that we didn't do it, and didn't have that other meetings, because we didn't...
Right. So, it's not gonna be broken more, I mean, exactly.
So, what you are asking the council, and of course, we're not, we're not voting on that, this is a workshop.
Work with us.
But what you are asking the council is...
Work with us.
Authority to, to try to raise funds.
Yes.
And if I understood what you were also asking for in your presentation last time, was that the city clean up the building such that you could invite potential, I will say investors, partners, potential partners to come in as a part of your fundraising initiative?
Exactly.
Are those the two things that you're asking for?
Exactly.
That's, is that all you're asking for at this time?
At this time, that's, that's all we can ask for, is the authority to go out and find money for us to develop a plan, to come back and present to you all. But in the meantime, as part of the fundraising activity, if we were able to get in the building and to start allowing people to visualize what can be. We have a vision, we know what it can be, and surely, the city would, whoever buys the city, buys the building from it, they can demolish it, the building cannot be demolished. So, we're hoping that the city and private citizens can come up with a plan that everybody will agree with, that would be of benefit to historic nature of...
I think the, the point here is, we already gave the direction, go get the money, so you can take the building over, and we'll be, and we'll find a way to let you have the building, and that's where we are. Not, not us putting money into the building, that's what we didn't want to do. But at that point, you know, that's where we were. We said, "We, you can, if you go out and get the money, and you've got enough money in your foundation to take care of this building, we will look at how we can give you this building, so that you can, can run it."
We never, we've never, ever heard those words before in our lives. We have never heard that, the way you put it, the way you put it.
That's what I thought.
We all talk amongst ourselves. What are you gonna say?
Go ahead.
But there was just some, there was some suggestion, rightly or wrongly, that this project was related to the capital improvements program. Now, whether that is the official, I haven't seen a list of projects that will be constructed or developed as a result of the $15 million expected revenue to come in. Is it so far-fetched for the city of Guthrie to consider funds as a part of the capital improvements that citizens voted for, under the suggestion that that building might be restored? Is it so far-fetched for the city that owns the building to save Oklahoma the next several years? If these folks do, if they work hard to do it, the city, representing the citizens of this city, will work hard to do it also. It's a win-win.
Well, in July of 2015, in a workshop that, that this group was at, or at that time, it was Save Our Libraries, the sole, Save Our Libraries. At that time, the city attorney was to provide options at a later date regarding the ability to donate the property to a 501(c)(3).
That's the whole purpose.
Yeah, that was July 21, 2015. So, it was mentioned at that time that that's what we would want, that's what the council would wanna do.
But he never did.
I did the research on that, I recall. I was asked to do that, how we could donate to...
He never came back to tell us anything. Did he come back to tell you all something?
There was other hurdles, there was financial hurdles and other things.
They're just waiting, they're just waiting.
That's where we are.
You just, well, we're here. Fairly recently.
That's why we're here.
Got your 501(c)(3) set.
I think that was the next dev, and we were waiting to see if there was a 501(c)(3) that we could donate, or...
I think what happened, and it's, it's not your fault, in my opinion.
There's really fault here.
Yeah, exactly. That's what I'm saying, so there's no...
What is fault?
That's what I'm saying, okay? So, I don't want her to find fault, that's what I'm saying.
I just wanna work with you, we just wanna work with you.
Is that when Bruce, when Bruce came to you and said that he was gonna renovate that building, or whatever he said to you, I went in that meeting.
And I thought he had talked to y'all.
No, never talked to, never talked to. Okay, I think it's okay.
You were in the meeting, but I hadn't even heard about it.
At that point...
I was shocked.
Absolutely.
But see, all of that misunderstanding, we all admit to, that there were misunderstandings, there was a lack of check and balance in the process of trying to come up with a decision. But we're here now, where the city has a building that it owns, it has historic significance to Guthrie and to the state of Oklahoma. Is the city government of Guthrie interested in restoring this building in partnership with nonprofit organizations, foundations, or whoever, we're able to get on board as partners to redevelop it? And if it doesn't happen, it won't be the city's fault. We're asking the city to support the effort of the nonprofit organization. I don't know what's so difficult in that, we don't wanna just throw it to the side and not even make an attempt at something that's historic. The first public library in the state of Oklahoma, I mean, it has some distinction. It's worthy.
Yes, when you were talking before about, you know, what it is that we wanted from the council, I think personally, what I would like from the council is to get permission to pursue the plan first, grant, to find out what the building actually needs, because you do own the building, the city would have to formally approve that we could pursue this grant opportunity to figure out what the building needs to come up with a restoration plan, so we all know where we actually are. That's what I would like to see, and I did hand out copies of this grant last meeting.
See, I didn't get that. What, can you go back over that real quick? That was the meeting I did miss.
There, I do have, I have an extra, I have a lot of extras, but this is a plan first, historic preservation grant from Preserve Oklahoma. It does involve a $1,500 match, but is a planning grant that's designed to come up with a plan of exactly what the building needs to restore it.
I saw that online.
Which also makes it easier to get larger grants if the nonprofit wants to pursue that. But since we are in a situation where the building is still owned by the city, you do need to have to authorize that we could pursue this grant to, you know, figure out where the building is.
I think we should, we need to do that, or we're gonna be stuck in this kind of just spiral of taki, so I think we should have our next agenda and give them the capacity...
Well, I thought we were trying to give them the building, so we wouldn't have to do that. I mean, we want to give them the building, period.
This can be done at the same time.
Part of the deal when we were gonna give them the building, they had multiple, here's the three things that had to be jumped. You had to do a 501(c)(3) that's done, had to do, no, the asbestos had to be checked. I still don't know the status of the asbestos.
It's been checked.
And you were supposed to raise money to be able to support the building. Now, that all, we all knew that back in July of 2015. This is a year plus later, okay? I don't know when Bruce talked to y'all about what his intention was for the tax, but he never talked to us about that, and I'm just curious if that halted your efforts to try to raise money? Because Bruce, you thought maybe Bruce was fixing the building, or not, I don't know.
Y'all had Bruce, y'all had Bruce as city manager.
For a year.
We didn't have him.
Right. Right.
Y'all did, it's up to him to talk to y'all on what he wanted to do.
No, I understand that. I'm asking a question. Did that halt you from stopping to try to raise the money, is what I was asking?
Okay, I think that we should move forward with trying to get them money to do a grant to figure out what in the heck they need, because we're just never gonna get anywhere until we move forward with that.
So I'm back to.
I think we should do that. For us, it's an obligation to at least get these guys to move forward in that way. I mean, that's the very least we could do.
You're asking for the authority to pursue the grant.
The plan first grant.
But how can we do that until we know if we can gift them the building, or how can we convey the building to them? Isn't that legal?
We've got a way to do that.
See, we'd like to develop a plan before there's any commitments made. The city won't be on the hook, no one will be on the hook. If we are able to get a planning grant, to develop a plan to present you, nobody is committed to do anything until a plan is submitted and we hope that we can sell you on the plan.
And you can't fundraise or get grants without some kind of planning under your belt. You can't do that.
That's the first stage.
So these guys have their hands behind their back at this point.
Well, but that grant is to get the planning.
Exactly, that's the point.
So you just said you can't fundraise or get a grant without planning over your belt.
No, they cannot without this, they cannot, if I'm gonna get a grant, if I have a good plan and a solid plan that's credible, I can't move forward.
Okay, but if you get a grant to do a plan.
If you authorize us to, we'll get the money, we're not asking the city for planning grant money. I'm a grants person. We'll get the planning grant money if you guys will authorize us to pursue grant money to come up with a plan for you. And in the interim, do something with the building as part of our fundraising, where we can get in there and bring some VIP partners.
Now there's two things. What is the authorization to pursue the grant funding? The second thing that you just introduced was what I said before. You were asking for money for the city, you're asking for the city to go in and clean up a little bit of the building so that you could bring partners, potential partners into the building to facilitate.
But what is the status of the asbestos? This cleanup might be.
Jim knows more about what's inside the building.
Yeah, I guess I can speak a little bit to that.
That'll be good.
From the asbestos perspective, you know, is there asbestos in the building? The answer is yes. Is it a danger? The answer is no, it's encapsulated, it's pretty much in the floor tiles and so it's fine. So that is not an imminent concern or danger. So that's been taken care of and handled. I think the other concern we have right now really is with the building itself. You know, as we went through time, what little bit of rain we've had has continued to seep through and so the false ceiling like we have here in City Hall, that false ceiling at the library has fallen. Now the ceiling, the original ceiling of the original building, which is kind of a tongue-in-groove, you know, 12 by 12 pieces of tile, has also fallen. The southwest corner has now fallen even more. And so my concern would be even for city employees to go in and try to clean that up, especially with, you know, the possibility of an earthquake or something happening. I mean, if you look at, you can see through those corners, you know, I.
So what are you saying? How do we fix the building then?
Well, it would have to be, you know, engineerally looked at and probably just lift those corners up with, you know, mudjacking or engineering techniques or technologies. It could be done, but it's.
Can we get our engineer out there and tell us what it needs?
Yes, absolutely.
How much is that?
Everything.
How big is the building?
It's not that big. I'm looking for a product deal here.
We don't want to cause extra cost to the city, but if you have staff that can go out and inspect the building and do a cursory inspection and determine that it is suitable for people to go into, or if it's not, then we determine one, two, three, four, what has to be done, and then the city could say what it can do within its own resources before we would have to talk about going outside.
See, but that's just it, we don't have suitable staff to make that call, we have to pay a fortune to the staff, to the guys.
He's contracted.
That's why I'm wondering, how much would something like that cost? I say a fortune, maybe it's not. Is that like a couple of grand?
Building inspection like that, I would contact a couple of other people and refer them on that. I would not go in and inspect an old building like that. If we're talking an old building.
We're talking a historical building, 50s type building.
Yeah, I would hire somebody that had, you know.
That experience.
Specialized in that.
Okay.
Okay, so we are at a point where.
So what kind of money are we talking about on that?
But I didn't tell you he hasn't looked at it.
I didn't understand that, but.
For a building inspection?
Do they do it by the hour? How do they do that?
You know, they would look at it on a case-by-case basis on how many, you know, how many structural members are in the building that they're gonna have to go through and inspect, how many days it's gonna take them to do that.
Of course, you could do a request for proposal without making a commitment, and then the city would get some idea of what the cost would be.
See, I know Zee's saying, this is exactly why, you know, when we started championing the torch, this is what you guys didn't want. Because now it looks like we may be forced to put a roof on it if we don't do something pretty soon.
Not forced to.
No, forced to.
It may be necessary to be let in order to accomplish the goal, but it's part of anything else. The capital improvement project that the citizens here voted for to raise $19 million, somewhere in there, if it was just $50,000, surely you would commit to some small portion to get the thing done.
Actually, we had, you had the gentleman that said he would put the roof on for free?
But I don't know who that was, and that guy was not.
You know who it was. And Master, you know who it was.
But he's no longer involved like the city manager, he's no longer involved.
Okay, all right, that's fair enough, that's fair enough. I accept that.
And we also, other entities that we were looking at that also helped, because at the time, that's the direction we were trying to help. So those resources are still there. Maybe once we get into the project, we can ask them again to assist the city and can be done.
Okay.
We're asking for you to give us permission, if you all would discuss it.
Well, we can't do it at this meeting.
No, not at this meeting. As I said, we won't be taking it at this meeting.
I know that we've given a proposal before.
Yep.
We have given these out before.
Right.
So we thought that everyone had one of these, and that this would give you an opportunity to discuss it and come back and ask us questions, or maybe we could ask questions of you. That's all we're asking you to do. It's not a brand-new thing, we've talked about it before, but we keep talking about what was said and what was done last year or year before last, but we're just asking you, can we move on?
To pursue the grant.
Because I have grant opportunities to try to match that $1,500 grant. I have that lined up, but I told them I can't, I can't apply for this fund, because the building belongs to the city, they have authority, I'd be out there doing something I'm not authorized to do.
All right. Dr. Royal, thank you. Anybody else have any?
Yeah, I do. So where do we go from here?
It gets put on the agenda for city council.
No, I know we go to the low water dam, okay, but, you know, we can't just kick this thing down the road. I mean, where are we going?
Put it on the agenda for the.
That was just so inutile.
The things they asked for.
A resolution would authorize the Friends of Access to Library to move forward with seeking grant money to develop a plan.
We put it on the agenda to vote on those two things and we move on.
And as a part of that, if you will, and as a part of that, if you will, that you will look into and let us know if, when, and how the building could be prepared for us to move forward to try to raise some money.
And Council, I think they were so inconsiderate of what you just said. I mean, here we are, sitting here in a conversation, trying to get some things done, and you try to blow us off.
I'm not blowing you off at all.
Nobody sounded like that, even you.
Not at all, but we're saying the same things over and I think we're wasting our time.
But it's how you said it.
We're not blowing you off, we're giving you every consideration for a couple of years.
If I could, if I could just, so we will identify those two things on a council meeting.
Well, we're gonna identify the grant thing on the council meeting. I don't know how that we can identify a cleanup, because again, Jim's afraid to even let our guys go in there.
Well, it would be authorizing somebody to go in and say what's necessary to.
That's what I'm talking about.
That's would be the two things.
So I think we just get our engineering involved at this point and be done.
So, anyway.
Figure out what's wrong with it.
You want to authorize, about the pending grant?
Yes, that will be an authorization.
That's what we're gonna do.
Then you want to authorize your city staff.
This will be a vote to authorize that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Understand that.
I got it.
Okay, all right. We will move, we're baby steps, but we're moving in the right direction.
But that's what I'm saying, according to what Jim's saying, if you see cracks in the walls, we don't have time for baby steps anymore.
Well.
The expansion itself is a baby step. We got to go step by step. We wanna build confidence with you folks. And so, well, thank you for the opportunity to.
And the planning grant would actually cover some of these things, if they're things that city staff can't do, and it's a quarterly grant. So the sooner we get the grant in, the sooner we can get people to come, give us some definite answers before the building gets worse.
That grant would be a basis for us to apply for larger grants, but we've gotta have your authority first.
Understand.
Okay, we'll get that on the next council meeting.
Very good. Very good, thank you. Thank you for your time. Now back to item number two. Matt?
Hi.
Come on right up here. Discussion concerning the low water dam, we have provided some new information, new cost estimates, I think.
Just a more detailed cost estimate of the alternative.
Throw things out, okay? All right. Let me go ahead and open it up. Any questions from the council?
You obviously recommend the bigger project.
Yes, more sustainable solution.
The return on investment is better for the time and the investment in it, is that what you're saying?
Absolutely, over the lifespan of it, if you're not having to go down and constantly maintain it. It's a less maintenance structure, the way it's situated, you have an upwater dam to catch your finer debris and coarser debris, and then you have access along the entire reach to where you're able to easily get equipment down there to remove any logs or trees that may eventually cause an obstruction there, you'll be able to maintain that. You're talking about a substantial reinforced concrete structure, two of them, as opposed to an earth and fill material like was there before. And you're also looking at placing riprap along the bank to provide stabilization to the banks to prevent any bank accretion from occurring, like what caused the last dam to fail, was the bank erosion along.
But item number two reflected, or option number two reflected increased riprap too.
Yes, we were incorporating riprap as well, but we did not have the, we did not have the additional structural.
The concrete.
Concrete structure upstream to help catch some of the sediment and debris that would be coming, and reducing the amount of maintenance required for the dam.
So the actual pillars or pylons or whatever we're talking about are actually gonna be upstream from the actual dam foundation?
You'll have one located just upstream, then you'll have another one located downstream. So you'll have a pool of water in the middle. And so as your sand and your finer, coarser debris is coming down, instead of getting caught immediately downstream from your pipe and starting to build up where your intake pipe is, the sediment stuff, you're actually catching it up here and keeping a pool right here. You also have this that's gonna stop some of the woody debris and catch a little bit of it before it comes down and gets into your pool. Therefore, you're reducing the likelihood that you're gonna create an obstruction and sediment accumulation in front of your intake structure by placing this dam there.
And the difference is?
A million dollars.
A million bucks, yeah.
So I got a question, do you guys periodically go in there and remove obstructions if need be, or, because there's gonna be, even though you have a pool, there's gonna be some sediment buildup over time, it's gonna be slower.
And part of the larger project, part of the larger project involved a small access roadway that was wide enough to get a small excavator in there to be able to perform the routine maintenance, back a truck in, be able to load things and get it out there periodically.
So the city will do that with their equipment, but there'll be access?
Yeah, there'll be adequate access there that's not gonna wash away, and it'll be concrete road with riprap banks that you'll be able to reach out.
There you go.
How often would we likely have to, on a yearly basis, every couple of years?
It would vary year to year, depending on the intensity of rainfall you have, because if you have more woody debris falling in the river during a really wet year or something, then you're gonna see more woody debris coming, you know, and some of it during the flood condition, a lot of it will go right over the top, you know, but there's gonna be some times that you'll get some woody debris floating down. It's just gonna catch there, and it's gonna start to build up.
Are we trying to protect ourselves from a hundred-year flood, or is this something that you would see?
We're trying to, we're trying to be able to continuously operate the pump station down there in order to be able to fill the reservoir and also utilize this water resource during drought conditions at the water treatment.
We just can't have horrible water anymore.
No, no, I mean, this is.
That's just baseline.
Obviously something that we've gotta do, it's depending upon whether we wanna do a half-million-dollar option or a million and a half-dollar option.
That's correct.
That's it. That's what it is. It's worth a million bucks to put that, those concrete piers in there.
How many more years does the million dollars give us? The extra million dollars give us, just?
In other words, what's your guarantee for building for free? Because we will require a guarantee.
Oh, I would anticipate, you know, 50-plus year service life on a, on a structure like that.
On the million and a half, the big.
Correct, correct.
And you say 50-plus year, what about the earth and dam?
Earth and dam? You know.
Could go away.
I've gotta sign and seal these plans, you know, and I'm pretty young in my career here now, so, you know, I mean, the next big flood that comes and you're talking about earth embankment that's protected with riprap, you know, it's just, if you get a large amount of, if you get a large obstruction on there, a large log jam during a high flow, you're gonna get a lot of shear force exerted on that, and it's likely just to shove it right out of the way.
So it could happen.
Whereas concrete and steel is able to withstand the force.
Start over again.
Okay, so now you had a 430-some-thousand-dollar contingency in your last plan at 1.60 feet.
Yes.
And now it's a 118, but it's the same dollar amount. How did you break that 400-and-some-thousand out?
Well, before we had just a contingency in there, it was.
400-and-some thousand.
400-and-some thousand dollars, and yes, what exactly at the meeting we had.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. That was on the wastewater treatment plan.
No, no, it was on this.
But you just specified a line on geotag or engineering survey, and you broke into that, those line items. So where is it then?
Your other three options, you used 20% contingency, and on this option, you used a, what equated to be a 30% contingency.
But now it's showing.
Expanded the, the line items there expanded to other topics.
It was contingencies and fees, and so what he's done is broken out.
Now it's geotag, engineering, as I was just saying, survey, and resident project represent, right? I mean, all that's part of that.
So where's the, I'm saying any fees?
Correct. I, they're all down here.
Oh, that's it?
Survey instructions taking, you know, like top traffic survey complete, you know, the legal survey, we're underway on that right now.
But that's part of this.
So those, those fees would have been involved in option number two?
Yeah, that's, those are just, this is just a breakdown of the engineering services for the fees. You have a total project budget on top, and then you have a breakdown of engineering fees and services.
Mainly because you had that question, right?
Yeah, I thought this was what was asked for.
Yeah, it was, it was, but we're.
I'm trying to find out where the 400-and-some thousand went. That's all I'm trying to find out.
It's all incorporated in there.
Right?
The engineering survey.
189.
RPR.
Engineering, that 189 is part of that?
Yeah.
That's the best part of the contingency right there.
118.
That was part of the contingency.
And then these others are, no, that's all part of this one-eighty-nine.
It's like one eighteen, but that's all he had.
Doesn't this equate to one-eighty-nine, five-sixty, or nine, something like that?
Yeah, and then he explains it more. And, and, but why are those fees so much more expensive?
Pierced up, pissed us.
When is this gonna be on the conference for us to actually cast a vote on?
That's what. Next, this comes to the fore.
That's what he requested.
I thought it was, yeah.
I think we need to, so we, uh, or it's just three.
Cadillac is an insurance thing to, 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 to. Other ones could go away in that in a year or less.
I'd rather spend a little more money and have more of a guarantee.
We got the water line. We, we got the water line.
No, I mean, did you guys put any? I don't know.
Can we, uh, can we have just one person speaking?
A little bit of time.
No, harder.
Go ahead, Steve, speak.
Okay, so, uh, we've got, uh, we have, we do not have a million and a half dollars in the water fund.
One point four million.
One point four, so we're close, so we would have to supplement that with capital improvement money. If in fact the contingencies, you know, the contingencies may not happen, uh, you know, that's, that's a, that's a buffer. That's a buffer in there. Uh, so basically, we're talking about a, you said Cadillac, a Cadillac version that will last a hundred years, we have that in the record.
Or fifty years, he's saying fifty, he's getting ready to talk about a fifty.
Fifty, fifty, uh, versus a half-a-million dollars, uh, earthen dam, uh, expanded riprap, than what was, than what was in option number one, uh, but, uh, but certainly not, not the guarantee that option number three has.
Not the certain.
Get to door number three.
Door number three, anyway, this is on our agenda for, um.
What is the guarantee, I'm gonna ask that again.
Well, we carry professional liability insurance, and, I mean, it's reinforced concrete